Moving to the next item, did you have a?
I thought this was Mr. Baker as well on the next item.
Oh, no, this was my item, I guess, we didn't, we thought there would be some explanation. This is...
I jumped ahead, sorry.
Item four is what I'm looking at. This is, this is an item that I raised in my president's report last week and follows up on the April 22 meeting and discussion we had from members of our community expressing a desire to have the board relook at the Anna Yates ECL use and whether or not we could indeed approach the K-12 co-location issue differently and either on an ongoing or some sort of transitional basis split the use, the grades, and how to have a K, the ones that have sort of been discussed and thrown out, I don't want to limit it to just that, but that seems the logical breaks are K-3 or K-5 at Anna Yates, and then a 4-8 or a 6-12 at ECL site, or the current plan, a K-12 at ECL site. So those are sort of the, at least the three permutations in my mind, and I don't want to limit it to those if people have other ideas on how to do it, but we have to start somewhere. And the, my proposal is that we take a look at this and explore some questions around the co-location versus separate location use, and we do so in a series of study sessions over the next several months, and that we use this time tonight to brainstorm what the major questions we'd like to address in the, in the study session are. The ones that come to my mind, and certainly were, you know, in the community's mind on April 22nd included what, what would the additional cost, if any, be to separate our sites versus having a single K-12 site? And that's going to take some tricky modeling, we've had a couple of discussions already at the finance committee on how to approach that, but I think for purposes of tonight, I think that's question number one, is what, what if any additional cost would that, would be incurred? I guess the overarching question is, is this a good idea? Is there board support for, for having this series of discussions? The other kinds of questions that I would ask would be by splitting the sites, what's the effect on the level of services we're able to provide our students? In terms of the health and wellness center, the school-based health center, the special ed, food service, library, after-school, rec, what, custodial, what, would we be able to provide the same level of service by splitting the sites as we would by having them all on one site? What are the potential positive and/or negative effects of a K-12 co-location? I think we have many new members of the community that maybe weren't around when, when some of the, the potential benefits of co-location were, had been discussed in the past and over the years. So it does seem worth having that, reviewing that, and maybe there's new literature that points in one direction or another. We do know that there is new experience because there are many, there are more schools around us. The Oakland School Board, every, has their board meetings on a K-12 co-location site at Matt West and La Esqualita, I believe is the, La Esqualita is the, is the elementary school associated with it. Madison Park is another one in Oakland that is currently in operation, which I don't know very much about at all. So I think there's, Lighthouse is a, is, is a charter school that's a K-12 that the district has looked at before as a, as a way to see how they're operating. So to the extent there's local experience available, it seems worth trying to figure How, how does the, the space that we have available at Anna Yates compare to ECL? We've had some discussion of that in the past, but again, it seemed that, that everyone's information might not be current, and maybe we've changed the design since the last time we had that discussion in ways that impact play space, outdoor space, classroom space, and the, what would we, if, if we did a K-3 or 5, some configuration, Anna Yates, what, what do we do with the space at, at the ECL site? Like, how would we use the space that would otherwise be occupied by the K-3 or the K-5? What's the best use of that if we were going to go forward with a separate solution? So I've got other thoughts as well, but those are some, some starting points, and so I guess my question is twofold to my fellow board members, is this overall approach sound like a good idea that we should undertake, number one, and number two, if so, are there additional questions that we ought to put on the table?
I might add, I believe there's probably been studies done for the district, because that's how they arrived.
Is your mic on?
Is it?
Yeah, I think I just wasn't picking it up.
It is, okay, sorry about that. I'm believing that there may have been some studies that have been basically consolidated that information to one source, as far as they've explored what possibilities and how to divide sites, or however, how they arrived at the K-12 model. So I think we have to, as staff, would probably need to find that information, because I believe talking with fellow member Dice pertaining to previous studies that they may exist, and it'll help guide us as far as redundant information rather than expanding that efforts that have already been done, let's see what we have in our archives or history of the project. Because I don't think anybody here is sitting on the, on this except member Dice.
With limited memory, thanks.
Limited memory, totally.
So there may be information that will help us, and that's all I'm saying is that. So we need to basically go back to source before we expend too much energy on it.
Those plans are actually available on the ECL website, very thorough documentation of sort of the process. I've combed through those, you know, it's out there. It shouldn't be too hard, and I think I've sent some to you as well, Dr. Rubio, but it's, it's out there, the information's out there, you know.
I was just going to say, I support the strategy of looking at, of having study sessions to look at these different types of questions, because I do think from what was stated in the input, and my own feeling about, you know, what's the best way to get us to that place, and maybe that needs to be looked at the whole thing, and getting to that place as K-12, there's a lot of work that would have to be done, and that's just my opinion. I don't see, I see there's some work that has to be done in order for us to K-12 co-locate. So I think it is really important to have those study sessions, because we do need to, you know, be very sensitive to the fact that we have been on track and paused a number of times, and there's been a lot of changes and turnover, and it's really critical that we spend the time and do it right. As we're talking about, you know, building the right spaces, creating the right spaces, it's important to, you know, give it the right amount of time to, if we're talking transition, or we're talking about different configuration, we need to have that dialogue and make sure everybody's on the same page in terms of what the next steps are, so. And that's in partnership with the city, so I don't want to lose that piece, that's got to be part of it, because that's our obligation, is a shared obligation, it's not just one, one, you know, one board, it's a, it's a group decision in a sense, in some aspects.
Well, certainly the, how we do an after-school program, if the city's all over at ECL, and they're like, where are the kids? We gotta go get them? Oh, we thought they were going to be here.
And some of it's pipeline for them too, right? So I mean, that's the whole point, there's, I mean, you have to be able to balance it all, which we're not going to be able to do. I mean, we have clearly an enrollment challenge ourselves, so, I mean, there's, there's a lot of pieces, and I think doing it in a smart, and I'll just say a smart way, being very thoughtful about it, and not rushing into one direction or the other, because we have a clear enrollment focus that we have to put some time to, and energy, more than time and energy, but, but we definitely need to be really thoughtful about how we bring this project, you know, full circle, whatever it is, whatever its configuration is, it has to have the, the right conversations at the right times, and, but make sure we're, goes back to the program, make sure the programs are clear about what they look like, and where they fall, and who's part of that conversation. So there's a lot of pieces I have to feel really comfortable about seeing, but I think this is the right thing to do, is have a series of meetings, or a series of study sessions, and making sure we're not just the only ones meeting, put that way. It's got to take, it's not just board, it's got to be staff and those who are directly impacted as well. That's my whole thought.
Well, I mean, the way that I look at it, we do have an enrollment issue, we're not the only district, the state as a whole is declining enrollment, and, and many other districts are facing declining enrollment, including those around us, but we, the way I look at it is, is we have two tremendous assets. We've got a great school at Anna Yates, we've got an exciting new 21st century facility being constructed at ECL that's going to offer, you know, a school-based health center, a librarian, integrated services with the city after-school. So these are two assets. The question is, how do we best deploy our assets to maximize program quality and enrollment? And those two things are intimately intertwined, if we, if we build program quality, they will come, so.
And I'll just add, I like how you put that, because that's more or less what I'm reaching. I just don't want us to lose focus on the present today, and it doesn't do, I mean, it doesn't take us away from that, but I do think it is, it's def, it's both, it's both and, but just make sure that we do it in a thoughtful way, that honors and respects the work that has to be going on as it relates to enrollment, that's all.
Yeah.
That's all.
I appreciate what was said, I think, as I said a month ago now, we're at a unique point. I like the idea that we're finally talking about a plan, I think we've had an idea for a long time and not a plan. I appreciate that we want to look back at the record, but I think, you know, I'm always flabbergasted when I sort of think, okay, well, this has all been thoughtfully planned out, and I think we're at a point now where we have no choice, we're moving in, hopefully in six months. But I think this is an opportunity to plan, and I always think that you start with the plan, what it is you want to achieve, and then your backward map as to best achieve that. You know, I'm sure you remember backward mapping and that old style, you know, because I think we do have an opportunity, I think we have a lot of available space, which is a luxury in one direction from us, and, and an overabundance in another, you know? So while there is declining enrollment, I think if we have a good plan in place and a good facilities use, which we don't have at the moment, I think we can really get somewhere, and so I'd like to see us take this opportunity not to just make this a debate about whether to have two sites or to co-locate, but really use it as a time to plan and talk about what it is we want. I think we're going to be faced with some really tough decisions based on our budgets. You know, I think it was, we, we caused longtime members of the community their jobs this evening, and we are going to have to really look at, you know, not just how we utilize the space, but where we're putting our money in. You know, I think a librarian has been mentioned a few times as a, as a luxury item that we have that other districts don't. You know, classroom staff is a luxury item that other districts don't, class size is a luxury item that other districts don't have, and I think all of those things have to be on the table as we look at what we can do to balance the budget and, and create programs for our kids, and not just focus in on the debate that I have raised about whether we have one or two sites, but really about, these are the absolute basic services, but they come at a cost, right? And so if we have a librarian, we don't have, you know, bilingual classroom assistants. If we have a health center, we, we maybe have to increase our class size, you know? These are the things that, you know, if we don't have funding in place, so it's not just what the services we want, but how we're going to pay for them, and I think that should all be part of the plan, you know? So I think that's going to be the critical discussion in this time, is because I don't know that that's happened, that we've really looked at in a while, these choices, you know? I think in a few minutes, we're going to look at, we had a grand vision of a cafe, and that's been valued, engineered, you know, there was a, so that's going to be the case, of what can we actually afford, given our present circumstances? So, thank you.
I just want to, before we do that, just see, are there particular questions that people want to put on the table that, that I didn't cover, or you want to think about, and we can create a list, but...
I mean, I jotted down everything you said, assuming Rubio did something similar.
No, I did not, but I've been having the same conversation and thoughts. One thing we might want to add to the list I haven't thought about is, just as we're brainstorming this conversation, is we may end up with some issues of equity, you know, we're going to be, and this is not, I'm not trying to make one case versus the other, just to bring this up to after our list, we're going to have a very nice new facility with a safe, safer field, more monitoring, and probably a lot more technology than Anna Yates is going to have. So we just want to consider that in our conversation, I think, I hadn't thought about that. I think, you know, teachers may not be thinking about that yet either.
Well, I mean, I think that, I think that's the sort of thing to, to bring out, discuss, and people can knowingly express their opinion of whether they...
Yeah.
...would rather have...
Yeah.
...technology and K-12, or...
Right.
...less technology, but, you know, I mean, anyway, but I think, I think it's certainly a point to include.
Can I include that, the point about the fact that we do have a bond, and so I guess my, I'm just thinking of a broader finance heading in terms of what existing funding we have, capital funding, that will, once this particular phase is complete, what, because I know bond capacity is the issue, so it's not like we can just go and go get more, but, but just understand where we are at, at a given point. At some point, we'll know more about the performance of, you know, taxes in general, so that may or may not, and I'm not asking for it, I was just thinking in terms of one of those things that we need to be aware of, what opportunities exist in terms of additional funding that may support other facilities...
Right.
...owned by the district, or may not.
Right, right, and one thing we'll have to do is, this is just June or July, I forget the quite exact snapshot time period, is we'll be checking again, it's once a year we can, we can check this, and so we'll be looking again for the current project first, probably.
I always worry when we talk about equity and we only look forward. We have 500 kids going through Anna Yates next year, and so if they're not using equipment now that's meeting their needs, I'm going to be very concerned, and so I...
I'm not saying that.
Okay, I just, I, I worry that, you know, we've, you know, this was some comment made earlier this evening about, I, we've got kids now, we better be educating the kids we have now, and not just worrying about the kids of tomorrow, you know? They're, they're, they're what we're charged with today, so I worry if, when people say things like, ooh, Anna Yates isn't this or that, you know, I mean, your child goes there, I hope there's an education happening there now. You know, there was a moment where my child was going to go there next year, and I just, I, I worry about those 500 kids, that should be our number one priority outside of everything else, so...
Yeah.
You know?
What I, I, I think it's a, it is a question of the, there is a question about the suitability of the Anna Yates infrastructure, it's a 1960s building, I think it's a legitimate question for moving forward, and to member Dice's point, what I, what I heard, her framing was, if we decided we want to, long-term, stick with K-3, K-5 at Anna Yates, what are the infrastructure needs that, you know, and do we have the bonding capacity to, to meet them?
Yeah.
So, but I, but I think it's, you got a 1960s building, you got a 21st century building, there are going to be differences, what, we ought to know what those are, and what, if we want to continue to use this in X capacity, then we need, what, what does that mean? What does that mean for our modernization?
I think that's a great conversation to have, I just, I think we can't prioritize it over what's actually inside the classroom, because that's where the impact is, right? It's staffing, it's that idea of, of, you know, again, I think back to the conversation that was this evening, it's knowing every child, it's that sense of community, it's that sense of belonging, and so, but I agree with you, there's, you know, but again, if it's in, we have to make sure we balance these and have the community weigh in, because there are certain things that are going to be more important to the community than others.
Okay, well, I'm sensing general support for this direction, and we, yeah, and now we'll take some public comment on, and...
The first thing I want to say is that, since you just brought up the bonding capacity, somebody was talking recently, well, there's been quite a bit talked recently about how much property values are going up, and there's a two-bedroom condo at Watergate that's listed now for $700,000, which is really way, way higher than they were a couple of years ago. And so that's really going to affect the bonding capacity, because the reason the bonding capacity dropped was because the property values dropped, and so with the property values increasing, that should increase our bonding capacity. And I want to start this off by saying that tonight is just one of those examples, I mean, I think it's, it's wonderful to be on the board when you're planning building a new school and doing this, that, and the other thing, but when the rubber meets the road, and you have to talk to teachers or other people who are losing their jobs, I mean, that's just really, must be incredibly difficult, and so I want to thank you for doing that, I'm very sorry to hear that that's happening. So I just wanted to give a couple of the reasons that I think that you should be considering keeping the center, the, keeping Anna Yates open. One of, one of the things that Don Marion has mentioned is the cost of changing the plans, and I, I don't think you should change the plans, because there is always the possibility after a year or two years or whatever, that they'll decide that, you know, really the thing to do is to move the kindergarten K-5 over there. And I think that if you have larger classrooms, you can always use them for multiple purposes, but if you, if you need the larger grades for the kindergarten in first or second grades, whatever those grades are, I think you need to keep those, so I don't think that you should plan on, I don't think you should change the plans. One thing is that the Anna Yates is really a known quantity, it's been very popular, a lot of people want their, you know, their kids to go there, and I mean, you saw from the, the meeting, whenever it was recently, where quite a few people came to the school board and asked to have it kept open, and so I think that the center of community life is, it's still an unknown quantity, I mean, we don't know, it would be great if people do come in, but you're going to be starting it off gradually with the high school anyway. I think that if you start off with the high school, and then you move in, you know, six to eight, and leave Anna Yates open for a year or two, that leaves, that increases your possibilities for enrollment. I think if you're going to have increased enrollment, Anna Yates is probably the more likely place for it to happen initially, just because it is popular, and if it turns out that it doesn't, it isn't attracting people, and they really want to be in the new facility, well then, you know, you can make the decision at that time to, to make that move. And I know the, the question about equity and about community schools, because community schools were really, from my recollection of, as this progressed, was really one of the primary reasons for moving towards K-12, or was a big part of it. And I had gone to the community schools conference in San Francisco about four or five years ago, with, along with a number of people from the school district, and one of the things that I learned there is that the schools are, they all treat community schools differently, and, you know, they'll have, you know, certain things at one school they won't have at another school, and, you know, as schools are built and life changes, you're never going to have real equity, you're never going to have exactly the same thing in one school that you have in another. I mean, certainly the schools in San Francisco have a wide variety, and, and I think that the larger cities like San Francisco has community schools, I don't know, I don't, I suspect that they don't have all of the same community services at every school, I think that they have ways of sharing them. I know my last office, I'm our IT guy, we had two men in the IT department, and we had offices in San Francisco, Oakland, and San Jose, and they would spend two days a week in San Francisco, they'd come over to Oakland one or two days, and they'd go to San Jose one or two days, and I think that there are ways to work that out, you know, you can, I mean, I just think there are different ways of handling that, but I, I do believe that that's something that you can accomplish, you can figure out. And the, the other thing that I think is a really big factor, I'm at the last meeting, and this is a joint project between the school and the city, and at the last meeting, there were two city council members who got up and said that they think you should consider keeping Anna Yates open, and the husband of a city council member also asked that, so that's basically, a majority of the city council is wanting to, whereas at the very beginning when this was passed, this was before Dr. Rubio was here, and before Christian was here, and some of the other people, before Don was here, but at the time that this was finally passed, and they decided to move forward with K-12, it was 5-5. Five people on the city council were strongly behind it, and five people on the school board were strongly behind it. And now there's just a lot of, things are really shifting, and I think that when that happens, you need to take that into consideration, and I think that if you have, you know, a series of meetings that, where it's not where you have three minutes to get up and, you know, make your statement, and then everybody else takes, but where you have, you know, interaction between the parties who are interested, that then if the decision is made ultimately to not keep Anna Yates, there should be an understanding, a general understanding as to, you know, why that is, and if it appears that there's good reason to give consideration to trying it out, then you can try it out. Because you can always, it's not like you're going to create a new school to, to do this, the school exists, it's running, it's operational, it has students, it has parents who are happy to have their kids there, and so all we're talking about is delaying moving it and seeing how that works, and, and do you get the higher enrollment, which will help pay for, you know, teachers and, and staff. So that's all, so I urge you to house with me, it looks like you're going to, it looks like, sounded as though you were moving in that direction, I would encourage you to do so. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Cooley.
Good evening again, board. I wanted to say thank you for listening from our last conversation and actually taking the time to really look at this, but a couple of things to look at, at the study session perhaps, would be a systematic rollout, since the high school is coming over, have a systematic rollout for how the middle school and how the elementary school will roll over, perhaps leaving Anna Yates open... Um, perhaps leaving Anna Yates open does allow that room for growth, um, that we're anticipating, uh, in our student enrollment. And also, it's interesting, you mentioned the lighthouse. Uh, we did talk a lot with the lighthouse charter school when this first, when this idea first started. One thing that they do have are, are coaches, they have instructional aides, they have, um, there, there are other people outside of the teachers who support the program that they have, and those people are very key and integral to the success of that program, and they're on one site. Um, and how they communicate and work and collaborate together is very key and very important, um, to the success of that program. I will also mention to the board that Dr. Johnson prepared a report a few years ago, when looking at our staff, when our scores were at, at, they were very high, um, and how students performed, and he looked at our relationships and how we collaborated and who the principals were, and, and how all of these different integral parts and all of the people in the community, how they all worked together, that contributed to the success of the students, which we saw when we had our highest scores, and how also, um, the, the, the staff who was here, the library, the gardening community, a lot of those things that are, that are kinda on the table to be, something to be done with are integral parts to the success of students and teaching the whole child. Um, so I would say please look at those things. Um, another design for, someone mentioned space and how the space could be used. At one point, I can't remember which planning meeting I attended, they had some spaces with rooms for our learning center, where all the learning center teachers were in one room servicing students. Perhaps those rooms could be used, if you leave Anna Yates open, those rooms could be used so that more students can be serviced, um, in those spaces without being crowded in. Just a couple of suggestions. I don't know if anyone has actually looked into, uh, pre-K, um, and preschool options with having more space at Anna Yates, with perhaps the middle schoolers having a full program at the new site, that leaves some rooms open for students and perhaps incorporating, uh, preschool, um, element or sped services for pre-K and looking into some of those resources to possibly bring in income, um, for the students that we service. But again, I would just say please look at those reports, and everything is based on relationships. When we communicate and have good relations and come up with good plans, I mean, my motto is anything is possible if we work together, so we really, really, really need to work together on the case, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Board. Um, my thought was that, after talking on several Saturday mornings, uh, 'cause this is my community, I live in a community around the corner from the school, and so I'm often around when our kids are playing soccer on the field, and I go on the field and I'm talking with parents. They really want to feel that they have a voice. So while you're saying a study session, I'm looking at more of a, of, of maybe considering a workshop, where there are materials and information that you say was previously, um, on our website, re-discussed, and parents having options to have comments. Um, I can remember in my own experience in doing a workshop, and we had people breaking into groups where things were being discussed, and there were pros and cons being offered, and there was back and forth conversation between board members, and it was more, uh, felt like, uh, the community was being heard and listened to. So that was my, my one comment, was more of, maybe you might still have your work session, but also maybe think of a, a workshop as an option, because you do have some parents that are, want to be heard. And of course, we would have norms. Um, we always have norms when we have meetings, and we would encourage people to follow them, you know, and be respectful. Um, my second comment is, um, also talking to parents on those Saturday mornings. Uh, there are many people who would love for you to make the big mistake of getting rid of Anna Yates and leaving that campus open. And we'll be up for, uh, charter schools to come in, because there are people who are sitting and waiting for that campus to become empty. Uh, it's an excellent campus, it's well-located, um, and if we're not thoughtfully thinking of what we're gonna do with that property, um, just like Ms. Lewis said, um, Berkeley is getting a K through, uh, a, a pre-K program, uh, for, for their sites. Some sites are becoming pre-K 1 and 2. Um, so, uh, West Cota Costa has some pre-K programs. Uh, we've been talking and doing investigation now, uh, because next year we're gonna have pre-K class. We have 14. We had a bunch of kids we could've accepted last year had we had more space to put them in. We were, we had kids on the waiting list. So if we're talking about available space and more enrollment, if you're looking at what other districts are doing, pre-K is a way of increasing enrollment. Uh, and I, I think this year's enrollment is gonna be similar. We will have a entering pre-K class, and we have 14 students already who will be pre-K. So we're looking at close to, based on not even looking at incoming enrollment for kindergarten, that we may have four kindergarten classes. So when you're looking at that, I think you really need to look at expanding the pre-K program. Uh, we also have some kids who are coming from this site, who will be coming over. Uh, one of the things we did was take some of our special ed programs out of, of the classrooms. Uh, we need more services to be able to service students who need additional services. And we're noting in kindergarten, being that I'm a kindergarten teacher, that there are really a strong need for some additional services for students coming in. So, uh, if you are having those conversations with your teachers who are presently in the trenches, you're gonna see that some maybe the, the programs that we have now, uh, with the pull-out and, uh, services, they're working, but could we better service our special needs service, uh, students with additional services where we pull them into resource rooms? And if we have available space at Anna Yates, that may be something where we can better provide resources for special ed. That would be also another way of looking at additional resources for our district. So, um, please consider the workshop. I think it, some of your people that you don't necessarily always get along with might appreciate that, and, you know, and sometimes the best way to get people to, uh, feel comfortable is to help them in the planning process, and help them be one of the ones that maybe be the person who helps coordinate and get that workshop together. That's a thought.
Thank you. Thank you for the suggestion. I think it's definitely worth considering how to, how to, um, make the process inclusive and interactive, and that probably doesn't mean doing, discussing at 8:30 on a, on a school night, so. It's a good suggestion. Further public comment on this item? Further board comment on this item? Okay, I think we're, uh, moving forward, and stay tuned for how that's gonna be, uh, rolled out and win. The next item, you wanna introduce, um, superintendent, and then I think this is member Pat's, uh, suggestion, so we can.
Yeah. Uh, good evening again. Uh, the purpose of this item is to let the board have some time to discuss the naming of the ECL gym.
So, as we open these new buildings, I think we are, use my cliche, we have a unique opportunity to, uh, name them after people who've contributed to the community, and I think that's really an important task. Um, I think, uh, Mr. Ferber spoke how he'd like to go back to Emory High, not, uh, Emory Secondary School, and, um, while that building isn't quite ready yet, and that's a discussion for, for a later date, I do think the gym is gonna be the first building that opens up, and, uh, um, you know, reading through board policy and how this works, the way you name a building, uh, and it's attached here, and you guys have all probably read it, but the way you name a building, as we set up a committee, they come up with some recommendations, and we go from there. So, that's what I'd like to see happen, as we start setting up those committee, at least for the gym, to, uh, move in a direction to name it. Um, you know, I, I, I've talked to a lot of members of the community, and I, I, uh, you know, I, I have an idea that was given to me by, uh, council member Asher, um, but, uh, you know, I think I'd like to see the committee go and come up with some names that would fit Emoryville and fit, you know, a gym at the high school, so. But yeah, so that's the purpose of this item, is sort of allow us to create that committee.
Thoughts, reactions?
I have one.
Yes, member Mary.
Actually, I think we may touch upon that at the next city school, uh, committee meeting, as far as naming certain parts of the campus. So I think we might wanna look at a comprehensive approach, as opposed to delving into one specific location or one specific building. So that item will be probably brought up during that discussion, so I, I wanna take a look at the bigger picture as far as, uh, rather than honing on one, one point. And that's, that's all I needed, wanted to ask, mention.
We had a draft, or I got a draft agenda item, I actually don't. Did others, from, from the city schools people? And I don't. So maybe it was just, um, maybe I got it 'cause I'm president. Yeah. Did that go, do you know, uh, Mr. Baker, if that went to all board members, or, or, or just the co-chair and Iowa CC for being president?
Yeah, I think I just got a draft for, um, for the next week, but it wasn't the final. But, um, I do know that this, this topic in terms of naming was, it was, um, touched upon at the last city school. The problem is, what, I can't, I mean, I'm sorry, but, um, it didn't have the minutes, so I couldn't reflect back, like, what, what was the discussion? But I do know that, um, because the gym and the pool were, um, and the fields were part of the, um, joint use, uh, that's probably why it came up in that conversation. Um, and I think that's where, uh, as Mr., um, excuse me, member Marion, I was gonna get it out, uh, mentioned, that it, it's definitely was one of those topics on the horizon. But a valid point that it will be the, a building that's coming online fairly soon.
Yeah.
And I don't know, um, in the grand scheme of things, what our, um, is there a grand opening, a soft, I mean, not a grand opening, of course, but a soft opening in terms of the facility or what the plan is, because I think whatever is done, whether it's coordination with the city or if there's certain pieces that are, you know, are gonna be part of, um, the unveiling of things, it needs to be well, you know, addressed in terms of the naming or, um, doing something, so.
Again, I just, um, you know, I'm all for involving the city. I think, you know, particularly knowing that the city council as well as I do, it increases the likelihood that it goes in the way that I would like it to. Um, but I think for me, it's really important that we make sure we either amend board policy to allow us to do that, or that we, um, follow board policy, and so I think.
I think we have to, I mean, I agree, I think that's right, 'cause I, I think part of it is making sure that we're respecting all, all documents, including the J O A, 'cause I don't know, I mean, honestly, I couldn't tell you right now if there's something, if there's a shared conversation about recommendations to both bodies or to us or something, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, and again, I'm, you know, I, I, I think if we put together a committee, we, our policy encourages us to have civic leaders on it, and I know, um, that we would have no problem doing that, 'cause I think this is important to the community as a whole. So I think that that's, you know, I think that's a nice way to do this, is if we do put a committee together, or, again, you know, or amend our policy, let's just say, hey, given this is part of the J O A, um, you know, the last discussion you guys had at the city school meeting was more around selling naming rights.
No, it was really about-
It was, it evolved into the-
Broader conversation.
Yeah, there's the bricks and things, so.
It came up, um, as I recall initially, uh, the city manager brought it as a financial fiscal idea. Could, should, could we raise, you know, money with a name, and that generally did not get a lot of, um, support. People were, thought that sounded too, um, corporate and exclusive, and, um, and then evolved into a, but maybe there's some good kind of-
Numbers, enough zeros, I think.
Yeah, we got into the bricks about the name, and it would be cheap, and, but, but I think there was kind of a general, more in the direction you're talking about, is there some historic recognition? Um, so I, I don't wanna-
No, that's it. We're all on the same page, I think, on this.
I, I think, um, yeah, I mean, I think, I think it's, uh, it's an intriguing idea, and it's a great opportunity. Obviously, we're, we're not building a new building or gym or facility every, every day. The, I have like a, a legal real estate question, which is like, who owns the gym and, and possesses the naming rights? And, and I'm not sure I know the, I think the answer is us.
I think so, too.
But we've leased it-
Right.
For 40 years, right?
Mm-hmm.
For a very long period of time to the city. Now that, I don't think legally gives them the legal right to, um, name it. Uh, so, so, um-
It's probably worth-
My working assumption is we legally, if we wanted to do it, we could do it. And, um, and, and, and maybe legally, we, to do it, we, we can do it by following our procedures, and who cares about the city? Like, I think that might be the legal answer, but I'd like to know. Now, my, it's not my feeling, obviously, is that we should, you know, do whatever we want. My feeling, obviously, and I think everyone else is, is we should have the conversation with the city, figure out what is the right procedure to explore the conversation in, and certainly include the city on the, um, you know, in, in, in the conversation, and on the committee is a, is a good way to do it.
Yeah, no, and I just think we're at the point where we need to start thinking about it, so this is fruitful. Thank you.
So, can, can we get it on the agenda for, um, Madam Co-Chair of the City School?
It's a draft agenda.
Oh, you're not gonna be there.
And there's a, the next meeting is July, is that correct?
I believe.
Fourth is the immediate next, but the one immediate after that would be July.
I believe we said July, because I think August is gonna be a bad time for most people.
The second, July 2nd, whatever that Thursday is before, that's July 2nd. City schools, yeah. Fourth of June, but then there's another one July 2nd.
But she's saying, she's worried about not being able to make the fourth.
Well, no, I'm just saying, I don't know if the agenda's been set. Uh, that I'm not sure.
And this was just a draft.
It's a draft.
So, uh, so I think if you tonight got back and said-
I'll email and say, add, include the topic of naming, um-
Yeah.
The gym specifically.
I, I, I think there's-
Or broader, right? I mean, in terms of the whole, well, yeah, the gym specifically, I think we bite that, that piece, so. Let me do that now.
No, I think there is a broader discussion, but I think, uh, so, and again, I don't know what we're held to with our board policy, if we need to come back and say-
Make sure they're all consistent, yeah.
Yeah, that we're, you know, and maybe we pass some resolution that says, given the ECL is a joint project, we're gonna suspend how we do naming and do it together with the city. I don't know. I don't know how we can do that sort of thing, but I think that's possible as well. Um, you know, so.
Okay, well, we can, um, so we'll try to get it on the, the city schools' agenda. The superintendent will talk to our J O A attorney, and, and we'll figure out the real estate question, um, and, um, then we'll, we'll have more, I think we'll probably revisit this at, at our next board meeting. It's a potential agenda item, or AA meeting in June.
Okay.
All right. Okay. Our next-